Okay, we are recording.
Okay, you ready to begin?
I am President.
Okay, it's been determined not to be practical or prudent to hold the public meeting of the Board of Trustees September 21st for McHenry County Conservation District in person due to the pandemic. So we are going to, we're available via Zoom and I'm going to call the meeting to order and for the, and you'll do the roll call of our board.
I will, yes. Okay, Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Dom.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Present.
Trustee Brant. Trustee Brant.
Must be muted.
Trustee Brant.
He's waving.
Is he waving?
Yeah, he waved.
Hi, Trustee Brant. Nice to see you.
He's not, he's, so, he doesn't.
Okay, I'm gonna go beyond. Trustee Fritz, I know he's here. Trustee Fritz. He's here. Are you having trouble too with sound?
Yeah.
Okay. Issues. Trustee Campbell.
Yes, here.
Trustee Henning.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, we have a quorum and while we're working on this, we'll see what we can do with Trustee Brandon and Trustee Fritz regarding sound.
They're not muted.
But I guess I'd like to walk on the Foundation Board and their President Brad Semmel. And I guess he'd like to, he could call his meeting to order and, or his board to order and do their roll call.
Thank you very much, John. I guess I, technically, I should probably start with the remote participation. The call for a motion, is that necessary, Elizabeth, for our board as well, or are we going under the same guidance as the District Board?
Yes, same guidance, but again, if you found it not prudent either, this is a joint meeting and I am physically present. So as the Executive Director of the Conservation District, I'm meeting the requirements of being at Brookdale.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and start then by just making a roll call. Kevin Ivors, Vice President.
Here.
Marty Gorman, Director.
Here.
Dennis Strayer, Director.
Here.
Ray Eisbener, Secretary.
Present.
Kim Becker, Treasurer.
Here.
Pam Althoff, Director.
Here.
Almost present. And also Shawna Flavel, our Development Director.
Here.
And I guess I'll, just a technicality, I guess I'll just go ahead and make a motion to allow the Board of Directors to attend remotely through electronic participation. Shawna is, you are present at the Lost Valley?
I am not. Elizabeth, our meeting agenda shifted from Lost Valley to Brookdale since it was going to be a joint meeting and Elizabeth is serving as our point person on site.
Okay, very good.
It was correct.
So I guess those, in regard to the State of Illinois gubernatorial disaster proclamation executive order 2020-07 and 2020-18, we're suspending requirements that members of the public bond to be present physically. And do I have a second of that motion?
All second.
All those, and that was like Kevin, all those in favor? Hi.
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 Thank you very much. Have we gotten?
Can anybody hear me now?
Oh, there you go.
There you are.
There you are.
Operator error. I was saying hi to everybody and no one was answering me. I was feeling very hurt.
Hi, Dave.
Hi.
Hi, Dave.
All right, are we ready to move on then? We need to open ours up for public comments. Is there any public out there, Elizabeth, that you can see?
There is not. It's just this evening, all of our board members and Shawna and I as staff. That is it.
Okay. Well, that moves us right along to discussion. Brad, did you say that you had some prepared remarks as to some of the projects that the, that the Foundation has funded and just some information for all of us?
Yeah, if I could. I know most, most of the faces, there are some, a few new ones that I haven't gotten to, to meet individually. So I appreciate this opportunity to have the two boards get together. And as President Henning and I had discussed a little bit earlier, I really liked this opportunity just to kind of get, it would have been nice, very nice to meet personally and just kind of introduce ourselves to each other and just recognize, I think, I just want to make sure that both the District Board and the Foundation Board recognize the fact that, that hopefully we're working as a team together and we're all in this with a common goal, a commonality to promote the Conservation District and the programs. And that's really the mission of the McHenry County Conservation Foundation. And I don't know if, I thought it would be best, I know in the past, even though we've worked with some of the directors for even years at a time, some of the understanding of what the role of the Foundation was and, and at times they kind of felt like a stepchild of the, of the district. And I really would like to, to try to come together and get everyone on, on the district staff as well as the trustees to recognize that what we're trying to do is, is really meld the resources and, and the capabilities of the district and the Foundation so that we can really be synergistic and accomplish more than we each could by ourselves. To that end, I, just to recognize what, what the Foundation has really gone through, some changes and some relatively dramatic changes with actually hiring a full-time staff. For the first many years, just going back to 1999, is when we actually became a 501(c)(3) and were established as the Foundation. And that was really set up to support conservation and the mission of the Conservation District and other conservation organizations in McHenry County. And really, the first thing that we were thrown into was the first bond referendum that the District had. And as part of that successful bond referendum, the Foundation ran that bond referendum and we were able to, to actually secure $68.5 million for the district. But that was a real big win and we kind of sat back and said, wow, that was quite a, quite an accomplishment in just a year's, a year's time after being established. But as part of that, the IRS regulations were very different then. And in order for us to run that referendum, we actually had to spend a certain percentage of our income each year so that we would not be considered lobbyists. And so we actually set up a grant program and, and we were very successful in, in running over $100,000 worth of grants to different organizations, the Girl Scout, the Land Conservancy, the Friends of the Fox River, Illinois Audubon, McHenry County Conservation, McHenry County College and a whole host of different organizations. So it was a really nice way to really introduce the Foundation and our goal and our mission to support natural resources and open spaces in McHenry County. And that was really, a really exciting first few years, like getting the bond referendum, running this very extensive grant program. And that really was what, we had had some strategic planning and we had gotten together and said, that was a great thing. What we're gonna do is just kind of sit tight here and if opportunities come along, we'll reach out and try to work with the district to help them out. But our real goal is to sit here and be prepared to run the next bond referendum. And so we did a few things where we were able to actually be very successful in, in getting some individual donors. And, and we had some Illinois Clean Energy Grants that we applied for and upwards of half a million dollars. And then along with the Oberwiler Foundation and Chicago Wilderness and some state grants, we were able to actually purchase quite a bit of land in Bull Valley, the headwaters of, of the creek there in Bull Valley Creek. None the township. We worked with some of their open states. We got some grants through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for doing sandhill crane research. And we got some additional Illinois Clean Energy for land acquisition in the headwaters of the creek again. We did some sustainable watershed action teams and some SWAT teams. And so we're, we're building up our portfolio that we're not only an organization that had some sound funding that, to start with, but we are very successful in going out for some grants. Those grants enabled us to purchase land for the district. And that brought us up to the next bond referendum. And the IRS regulations have changed a little bit. We didn't necessarily need to go out and spend money for those grant programs. So what we did is we, we ran the second bond referendum under the education. So alls we could do is educate the public in terms of the importance of that open space referendum. And again, we were very successful. We had a successful bond referendum and, and brought in a $73 million. So those two bond referendums were a real significance to the Foundation and really opened up what we felt was, was hopefully going to be a continued effort to support the district through running those bond referendum. Unfortunately, the economic times changed, the sort of the, the politics of the county changed and the districts had not run a bond referendum. And so we're sitting there thinking, we've got resources, we want to be active, we want to help the district, what else can we do? And so we went out and raised some grants. We got some state grants. We got some Illinois Clean Energy Grants. And we were in a unique position that when the district wanted to purchase a properties, there are some old farmsteads that were on some properties that the district wanted to purchase. And if the district buys those, they're stuck with barns and houses. And so we did some simultaneous closings so that we were able to actually close with the district. We parceled off out of those larger farmsteads, the house and the barns on, on three occasions now. And then we were able to turn around and sell those homes and use the, the income to further support the district. So we were in a very unique situation that we could, we can actually purchase property, sell, sell property and do things like that, but the district wasn't. So we've got these unique opportunities. And then we really recognized the fact that for a few years, we were just kind of, sort of took a lull and we weren't really successful in getting state grants on a yearly basis, Illinois Clean Energy. And we wanted to be more effective in helping the district. That's what we decided after some strategic planning, that we're actually gonna reach out, see if we could get an executive director that could help with these fundraising efforts. And that's Shawna. We were able to secure Shawna in that position and she's serving in that capacity now. And so since she's been here, we've been able to reach out with some funding opportunities with Battle, Illinois Clean Energy, some state grant where the Lost Valley project is coming up now. We've been able to purchase things like a boom wick applicator. We've done some solar aerator for fishing ponds. We've done the Discourse at Felpro, ecosystem study piers at Glacial Park. We've done the Equestrian Parking Lot. So there's this litany of projects that we're able to do. And with the, with the district staff and the board, we've changed our, the way that our strategy a little bit. We've reached out to the staff and tried to recognize what prior, some of the priority projects are in the, in the coming years. And we've tried to identify the funding level for recreation, education projects. And so if Shawna or any of our board are out there and meet with potential donors, we have sort of a litany of different projects. If we meet with somebody who's very interested in, in birds, we might be able to have a short-eared owl aviary that they could donate to if somebody's interested in land acquisition. We have a, some parcels that we've interested in purchasing with the district. So we made a nice list of, of projects that we can reach out to at different levels and different interest levels. And we've also streamlined sort of the process so that we know that if we're able to fund a project, that the district through their, we recognize the fact that some of the operational budget has been greatly limited and, and the district wasn't able to complete some of the projects that, that we had funded. So we've worked through that, a little bit of a hiccup that we had there and we feel that we're on track now that if there was a project identified by the district, we can fund that project, that the timing and the application and the protocols are in place that, that that can work a little bit more seamlessly. So that's sort of, sorry, I rambled on and on. There's a lot to get out there and we're trying to put together now just sort of a list of all these projects that, that the, the Foundation has been able to pull together. The funding that we've been able to garner for the district and, and get to the district. And it's been more than $3 million going to the district just in the, in these different projects, open space and the grants, Illinois Clean Energy, over $3 million in addition to the $141.5 million that we secured through the open space referendums. So that's sort of, again, I'm sorry to ramble on, I'm really passionate about what we've been able to accomplish over these years. And we're, we're trying to grow our board. Pam Althoff is, is our newest board member. And, and we're real excited about the, the coming months ahead and some of the opportunities that we've got for land acquisition. We, we just completed a 15-acre land acquisition next to the Marengo Ridge Conservation District that will ultimately donate to the district when the, when the time comes. So we, we've got a lot of things hopeful for, for matching some.
So Brad, I just want to congratulate the Foundation on two things. Is the purchase by Dale Schreiber, is, we used to have to burn around that in holding. And now that, it makes the management of that area so much easier. And I just saw a picture of the new dock or pier at the bog on Lost Valley Visitor Center. Very nice thing. I remember walking on the old broken floating thing that was half underwater. And what you, we have now, thanks to the Foundation, it's gonna be a lot better. So thanks.
Yeah, so I, as I say, we appreciate the, the trustees and the work that you do directly with the district. And, and I'm hopeful that we can work very closely in recognizing that, that we have different skill sets and that we can bring to the table and hopefully recognize that we're all working toward the same goal and supporting the mission of the district in all of our efforts. So I wish we could go around and I guess I'm trying to learn some names and faces and put some names together. So this is a good start and I'll, or where we can go with some further discussions.
Should we go around the view and introduce ourselves, maybe? I mean, see the names, but.
Sure, Dave. Go ahead. Start her out.
I'm Dave.
Everybody knows Dave, right?
Yeah.
Is that what we're gonna do or are we gonna, you gonna tell a little bit about yourself or are you just gonna go with the name?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be beneficial if we just go around and maybe just say how long you've been with either the Foundation or the district and, and what you do in, in your life other than serving in that position, just so we can get a background and a better understanding where perhaps everyone is coming from. So we will, maybe it'll be easier if we go around and we'll follow along the, at least I can see Campbell, myself, Shawna. And I don't know if it can make sense, I'm going along the, the photos in order there.
Well, I think if you go in gallery view, is everybody in gallery view?
Yipper.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
Yes, if you do that, you can get, and because we've got 16 people, we should all fit on the same.
I got it.
We do.
I just don't know if we're in the same order.
Oh.
Jimmy, I can just go down the list. I can see everybody who's in the meeting and just go down the list and have everybody introduce themselves if that works.
That works.
That's very perfect.
But if you get to gallery view, everybody can see everybody.
Yeah.
So.
I'll give everybody a minute for that and then I'll start the listing.
I can't see everyone with yellow ring. I can only see nine.
Yes, all I can see too is nine.
Um.
Are you on iPads?
iPads, yeah.
That could be it.
The person who's speaking should pop up within that gallery view. If that doesn't work, I would recommend going to individual view and whoever is speaking will definitely pop up then.
Sure.
But I think if your camera's on, it won't show. If your camera's showing, if you blocked your camera, we're not gonna see you.
No, but I think if you, even if you've got the nine on the iPad, you should see whoever's talking. They should pop to your screen.
Well, let's just go ahead, Shawna.
Yeah, so first person is Brad. Do you want to go ahead, Brad?
Okay, I was just giving myself a breather, but. I, I've actually been with the, with the Foundation since its inception back in 1999, so I'm, I'm the old timer here. So I, maybe I'm the institutional memory and hopefully I can pass that on to others and, and step aside one of these days. I, it feels as though I've been President for life here. I've been for, for many years, but it's, it's been a real pleasure to serve on this board. My other life, I'm actually the Endangered Species Recovery Specialist for the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. So I basically am responsible for doing recovery plans for endangered and threatened species, both state and federal, anywhere from Springfield North and specialty in ornithology and herpetology. So those, the, the two things that keep me busy. I'm also the Natural Heritage Biologist for Northeastern Illinois. They haven't, I've serving these two roles for a while until they get a replacement. I'm not sure if they'll do that soon enough, but it's been about a year that I've been serving in both those roles.
Thank you. President Henning?
Yes, I'm John Henning. I've been, I'm a farmer in the Marengo area. Been here all my life and I've served three years now on the Board of Directors here at the, at the, at the Conservation District. We sold a farm years ago to the district and we ran land with the district and been very interested in how, how that land is managed in a, in a conservation way, you know, using many conservation methods in our farm has changed over the years. So that's where my interest lies.
Trustee Campbell.
Okay, my name is Lynn. I've talked to many of you. I've been with the district as a trustee for three years, came on in the same year as John. My background is local government, administration and finance. That's where my training is from. I started with the district back in 2008 in their seed collection program. So that's kind of like my, kind of my pet project. That's kind, I really, that's kind of why I go back. I went there today for the first time in a very long time. So that's been a great program. I've seen it since it's about its inception. And have also been participating in the phenology program with the district, did the 2012 to 2014 three-year study. And we're kind of still working on it now as an add-on to that. That was a replicating a study from the 1980s that had been done here in the county. I'm probably a newcomer to the county. I'm, we came out here in '78. So, but I've enjoyed it. We're down here in Crystal Lake and very close to Lake in the Hills Bend, which is a very beautiful spot.
Thank you. And Trustee Dom.
I'm the new guy on the block. I just joined the team here just in the last week or so. My interest lies because for my whole life, business life, I've been involved in a lot of recycling, beneficial reuse of different waste products and things like that. I own a trucking company and also a, a beneficial reuse company that we land apply waste materials such as bio solids and things like that. And I was very involved with the McHenry County Defenders for many years as I housed their recycling center in Woodstock and was involved on a day-to-day basis with, with them. So I was sort of drawn into this situation with looking to see how the Conservation District runs and, and what kind of other programs I could get involved in.
Thank you. And Vice President Ivors?
I'm from Woodstock and I was on the District Board from 2007 to 2012. And joined the Foundation Board in, I think, late 2013. So I've had a bit of a glimpse of some of the history that Brad has mentioned and been excited to be a part of this growth and new opportunities here on the last, what, 18 to 24 months. So we have two kids in, what, second and fifth grade here in Woodstock. And I work up in Wisconsin for a construction material distributor. And we work on commercial and industrial projects or supply material for those projects, in my case, through Wisconsin and the UP. And last Friday, I was told I couldn't take pictures, but nonetheless, I'll remember forever being on the top of the state Capitol dome in Madison. So doing some, one of our customers doing some restoration work there. So that was kind of a awe-inspiring moment. But excited to always come home to McHenry County. And I'm always, I think, just enthused by the, the balance that we have here. I think working between the open space and, and you know, the neighborhoods and communities. So we live in town now. We're hoping to maybe move into some new home, a few miles north of Woodstock in the next year or two. So if we can put that together and get something built out there. So anyway, great to be here with all of you.
Thank you. Trustee Brant, did you want to give any further introduction or just?
Just a little. Was transferred here in 1984. So Lynn, you're an old timer compared to me. So my first chairman of the Soil and Water Conservation District was George Dom, Chris's dad. And with Soil Conservation Service, which changed into the Natural Resources Conservation Service, I worked with Chris and Pat and John for decades. Being in natural resources, I worked with Ray and Brad for decades. So then I met Dennis many years ago. So it's been fun knowing you guys and I'm looking forward to the future.
Hi. Trustee Thomas.
Hi, I'm Linda. I live in Bull Valley on a farm. I own a natural pet food store in downtown Crystal Lake. And I'm, I'm happy to say I am not the newcomer on the board anymore. Chris has now has that title. Go ahead. I'm done.
Okay, Trustee Fritz.
Uh-oh. No, no audio.
No, nothing.
We hear ya. No, we hear ya. I heard ya.
I don't hear him.
I don't hear him.
Yeah, try again. I did hear you.
He's pretending.
No, I feel his pain. I feel his pain.
Pat, can you hear, with your dial, it might be, Dave, did you end up, it was your microphone?
No, I had earplugs in and then I took them out and everything worked.
Well, I'll come back to you, Pat, at the end if things are fixed. If not, maybe Elizabeth can give a little bit of an intro. Trustee Cook.
Hey, I'm Bill Cook. I've been a trustee of the district for a year. My wife and I live between Ringwood and Wonder Lake on a 65-acre remnant of the Harrison Farm. We became acquainted with the district as they bought up Glacial Park behind us.
All right.
I have to admit, we used to, I'm sorry?
That's background for Christian.
I'm sorry. Guys, be quiet.
Anyhow, I'm a retired physician and people ask me what I do in retirement and I tell people I'm still trying to figure it out. But we've lived for 15 years full-time on the farm, which we purchased originally in 1980. We have horses and chickens and grandchildren in the neighborhood. And we have, when it's dry enough, about 35 terebale acres and we have some woodland. And when it rains, we have water running through the property. when it rains, we have water running through the property, so I'm familiar with agricultural tiles and water drainage issues and boundary issues with the district and neighbors and I've learned quite a bit in the last year. I'm sure there's more to learn and I'm sure with, you know, well-intentioned people and a very diverse group, I think there's a lot that can be accomplished for McHenry County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Gorman.
My name is Marty Gorman. I'm a retired teacher. I taught full-time for thirty-five years and then part-time for seven. And last year, and it was just coincidental, decided that that was going to be it. I've always had a huge love for the environment. Well, I moved up here to the McHenry County area in two thousand and five with the intention of when I retire, I was going to take advantage of what McHenry County could offer as far as its natural areas and I've been hopefully and luckily doing a lot of that. This is my second term on the board and I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you. And Director Dreher.
Good evening. I have been on the board, I think, three or four years. I start losing track. Someone could probably remind me. And I'm probably the newest resident of McHenry County. I arrived in two thousand and six, so Marty beat me by about a year there. My background is water resource engineering and I've actually been pretty active with the county, serving on the Plan Commission for their twenty thirty plan. Also helping them write the green infrastructure plan for the county, which the district has been a significant player in. One of my passions is ecologic restoration as I get closer and closer to retirement and have more free time. I I do restoration work on about a forty-five acre nature preserve here in Bull Valley. And it invites you guys to come out and take a look anytime. It's looking glorious out there right now with all the dungenions in bloom and the asters and the golden rods and things like that. And I guess finally, my my actual history with the district goes back probably closer to forty years. I used to work at the Northeastern Illinois Planning Commission and had interactions with the district and my my consistent observation is the district, among all the districts in the region, has a reputation of doing more with less, so definitely a commendable thing. On the other hand, we need to make sure that the the less that they're dealing with isn't too little to actually get operations done, so that's something we're obviously both working together to achieve in the long term.
Director Eisbrenner.
I I maybe I followed Carolyn Campbell here in nineteen seventy-eight, but my wife and I moved to Richmond at that time. And I'm a retired biologist, retired six years ago and Brad figured I needed something to do in retirement, so so he here and it's been, it was a joy working with IDNR and I had the opportunity to work with five different county forest preserves and conservation districts and and by far it was, it was and still is the most pleasure working with McHenry County. And I hope I can bring some of the the know-how I had with IDNR to the foundation and and it's been a lovely six years with bragging about what we get done to some of my friends and and relatives and I'm real proud of what we do, especially now that we have Sean on board and my my daughter lives in Australia for a year and my son lives in Rockford, so my wife and I are trying to visit all the national parks, made it to thirty-two out of the sixty-two in the last six years, pulling our little tiny house trailer around for about forty thousand miles, so I'm also a steward at Lake Elizabeth Nature Preserve, just north of Richmond. Sprayed about thirty-five gallons of herbicide this year with a backpack sprayer and I didn't fall down.
Congratulations.
Tiny house. It's actually a tiny house, like, right?
It's a camper.
It's a camper. I was wondering, because you see those tiny houses, they've got up there.
But we call it our tiny house.
Yeah. I think you could tow one of those too, anyway.
Director Becker.
Hi, everybody. I live in Gurnee in Lake County. I actually am not a resident of McHenry County, nor have I ever been, however, I have spent a lot of my life in McHenry County for various reasons. I joined, I think, I joined the board two thousand and six. Brad, you might know that more than me. I think two thousand and six. So I am currently serving as the treasurer for the board. By day, I am a banker, have been for more years than I want to admit right now, but I basically I run a division for a bank, Inland Bank. I run their treasury management division and their health savings account division that we have that's nationwide. I basically help businesses of various industries, municipalities, counties, school districts, funds manage their cash flow and short-term investments. I am a lover of the trails and the outdoors as I'm a horse owner for the better part of my life. And I actually, the horse I have right now, I adopted from the Hoofed Animal Humane Society in Woodstock. And actually, I did humane investigating for Haas for a few years. So there's a little bit of my connection to McHenry County. Actually, a bank that I worked at, my banking has mainly been with First Midwest Bank and Citibank, and then two thousand and six, I was with First Midwest Bank and at that time we banked McHenry McHenry County, some of their accounts, and that's how I got tied into tied into the foundation as one of my employees was on the board and stepped down and asked if I'd be interested. And here I am still today, so. But I've had a lot of fun working with great, great people over all this time and learning something new from everybody and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Executive Director Kessler, you want to give a quick introduction? I think everybody knows who you are, but.
I appreciate that. I hope so. Yeah, it is sort of wonderful to have such a dynamic group here this evening and just to exchange kind of your stories and and what brings you together and we do share that. I've been with the district since two thousand and six and actually am from Lake County, however, in two thousand and thirteen because of the love and I feel very much in what I do. It's my vocation and avocation. We purchased a hobby farm up in Harvard area, basically in Alden, just north of High Point, and so I spend most of my time, if I'm not here at Brookdale or around Conservation District sites, you can find me out at the farm and I'm in the garden or running a tractor or doing something to restore an old piece of history. But I love McHenry County. My background is in Parks and Recreation and prior to coming here, I did work for a park district in Skokie. So through that experience, nature and conservation were just a small subset of what we did. It was more of revenue facilities and programming and and all sorts of things from ice to fitness, et cetera, into camps. But here found a place that I love and what we're doing and we've got such a dynamic staff and we're truly unique in in what we provide and what we care for. And again, for those that referenced other areas, I do network a lot with other county forest agencies and other agencies and we are uniquely positioned and very proud of the work that we do, so thank you for your leadership and you spending time to to help us make a difference.
Thank you. Director Alpoff.
I apologize to all of you. I am driving and so I know you're all there. It's why you don't see me. I have to pay attention to the road. So real quickly, I am the Chris Dom of the foundation. I'm the brand-new kid on the block. Have always been interested and engaged with the Conservation District and more importantly, with raising funds. So I am looking forward to my new role on the foundation and working with all of the Conservation District directors. So I apologize. Hopefully, I'll be home within the next fifteen minutes and you'll see my little shiny face.
Thank you. And then I guess that leaves me. I've met all of you except for, I believe, trustee Dom in person. I'm Shawna Flavel. I'm the executive director of the McHenry County Conservation Foundation. I started this role in two thousand and eighteen and prior to that, I was working for the Nature Conservancy's Illinois chapter as their development communications specialist. I actually think I am the newest transplant to McHenry County, having moved here in two thousand and fifteen from Chicago. I bought a house out in Alden and one of my biggest draws to moving out here was actually the Conservation District and the access to open space that existed out here, and so the opportunity to come on board with the foundation and apply my experience working in nonprofits to help support the Conservation District's work was really an opportunity that I couldn't pass up at the time. Other than that, I spent a lot of time at home with my animals and garden a lot and tried planting my first wildflower garden this year, but it turned out to just be a really tall grass patch.
Yeah, I think we're just now, we're just hope it's pretty free-range the way it seems for discussion. Is there anyone that has a topic or a concern or anything I'm going to bring up at this time? And we can just jump in as to where we want to go with this from now. This is really just to get acquainted and 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 have a discussion. So is there anybody out there that has anything they'd like to start us off with?
Can I ask a favor?
Sure.
Hey, can can we start with a description of how the Conservation District would approach the foundation with an ask for assistance or funding or they have a bigger project? Can somebody basically describe the how the working relationship actually moves forward from from both ends? If the Conservation District approaches the foundation or vice versa?
Elizabeth, would you like to work us through the system? We just we just really put that in place this last year and it's still I think it's still being worked on, but and see how each thing goes, but each item, but anyway, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Okay, and Shawna, you helped support me here, so.
Can do.
Obviously, bringing on an executive director for the foundation has been key in keeping both boards apprised and and working collaboratively. What we've done and through Shawna's leadership and through us working together with our leadership team is we went out and we looked for projects that would be viable, just with an idea and concept. And so for multiple multiple years, looking basically to three-year approach, we did present that to our Board of Trustees just to see if there was anything on there that did not fit what they felt we should be focusing on. That was approved. We then sent that over to the foundation, so you got just a at-a-glance look, but of those, it's just a view. Nothing really gets started in the new process until we go back and we fill out, and this is what was missing prior, was a project budget. Basically, it's an application process where we get a description together, we put a project budget together and a timeline and then that is submitted by our program staff to myself and Shawna. We review that and then it goes forward up to our board and which we just did for a bunch of projects that'll be coming over to the foundation. We did that. We discussed it this past week and there'll be a voting on that tomorrow night. Then those projects will go over to the foundation and then the foundation will choose which of those projects you feel that you would like to fund or raise either through reserves or raise money for. And and so really, it's in your hands. We've just teed up what we feel would be appropriate and that's that's the way that we've developed this process. Of course, with that now too, by tracking that, we're able to then not have money transferred over to the Conservation District till the project is completed and meets those criteria. And we communicate back and forth. Anything else to add to that, Shawna?
Yeah, thank you, Elizabeth. That was a really good summary of the process that has been put in place. I would also like to add that it is a two-way street and a continued line of communication. The project list that was pulled together was pulled together before the fiscal year began. I'm sorry, I have a fly in my house that keeps landing on my head. But that project list was pulled together kind of as an outline of projects that the district staff were looking to fund and would give us an opportunity, if in a conversation with a donor, to give them examples of the work that we're trying to fundraise for. In addition, however, we also bring opportunities forward to district staff when donors or foundation opportunities present themselves. An example is that in January of next year, the Community Foundation has an opportunity for a seventy-five thousand dollar transformational grant coming up and I'm talking to Amy in the district's planning department to try to pull together a very wide-reaching project across the Prairie Trail that we think would appeal to the Community Foundation for that grant opportunity for that level of funding. So I like to think of the process as fluid. We have an outline, but if opportunities arise that are not falling directly in line with that process, we still allow for the fluidity of funding what the district deems most important and most critical.
Okay, thank you. That question answered. At least I feel it is.
Sir. Yeah, I I think it was also, I think it was also important that we tried to get projects that were representative of the different staff there at the at the district education, N R M and recreation, so we'd reach out and and reach as many different, as many unique constituency groups as we could, as well as if if we have a number of different projects that fall under different interests, whether they're trail projects or something to do with a short-eared owl or a Blanding's turtle. If Shawna or any of the foundation directors are meeting with a potential donor and we recognize they have an interest in land acquisition, we might have a land acquisition project that they're interested in birds or turtles or something in particular, so we felt it was important to have a nice diversity of of different types of projects so that if we found a donor that that seemed interested in releasing some funds or sharing some funds with the foundation and the district, that we could appeal to a broad audience and have that in our in our scope of of projects to bring forth, finding something that might be of a very specific interest to an individual.
You're good. Anyone else have a question or a comment?
I was thinking, just in terms of our getting together here, I don't know. I think when I was on the district board and it must have been two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten, but I can recall when we came together with the foundation board, so just this actual coming together, even virtually to me is a is a good is a good initiative, so of course, we're getting to know each other here. And, you know, hopefully in some way we can maintain that going forward, but, you know, thinking about tonight, I was just looking at our strategic plans and so obviously, there's a lot of synergy there. The district's plan, and I'm looking at it now on the other screen. One of those pieces, obviously, expand philanthropic support, so that's underneath that fourth pillar there for the district of our stewardship. And to work with the foundation, a grow base of donors to support, sustain and advance the mission of the district, so I'm psyched to see that as a, you know, as a as a foundation board member and you know, again, synergy, working together. Ultimately, for me, a big part of what I feel like I'm excited to do is, you know, build relationships with people and, you know, further our philanthropic goals, but so meeting people out on sites, but also just residents and business owners and that sort, so, you know, thinking though how we can work collaboratively in that aspect is exciting to me. So, you know, thinking though, how we can work collaboratively in that aspect is exciting to me. You know, so I want to keep in touch, obviously, with, with everyone too in different ways beyond just tonight, but just some thoughts.
I think it's important that if we see something, hear something or whatever that, or a concern, we pick up the phone and call. It seems like communication has not been always great between the two organizations. And with all the technology we have, that it doesn't seem like that should be possible any longer. It seems like we ought to be able to get together on any time and should talk about our concerns and our goals and where we want to go with these organizations. I think we really need to build this as a team. And I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, you know, for sure, having, having an executive director for our organization, for having, you know, Shawna, that connection with the district has grown, you know, exponentially. But the other one that we've talked about, and again, I think just because of this pandemic, it's been odd this year. But, you know, having one of ours, one of our board, you know, present or plugged in as a trustee to the, to the district meetings, you know, as you often, as you do with the liaison to our, our meetings. To me, you know, just to plug in. So I haven't been to a live meeting, maybe a short bit of one in the spring, but I, you know, I keep going back. I want to plug in, but I have seen a couple of them later. So I've been able to, at least the way our current technology is set up, you know, tune in later. So it's just good to get a pulse and understanding of, you know, what's going on. And again, I like what you're saying too, though, John, just in terms of, hey, pick up the phone and just connect. Hey, we, you know, we met so-and-so, you know, they, they said this, they said that, you know, let's connect with them, let's follow up. So, good stuff.
Great.
Yeah, John, I agree with you. I'm trying to, I think we need to figure that out. How do we communicate better? But that's a good idea.
Well, you know, I was also thinking as an outside agency, when we're doing the seed collection today, I mean, there was 15 people. Everyone was, either had masks on or when they finally got out and doing things. I mean, maybe there's some opportunities to work together on something where there's opportunities to have discussions, you know, for outside, a little bit further apart. Most of the people today were keeping their masks on, anywhere, wherever they were, as it turned out, which was good. But there might be some opportunities to work together toward a common projects. And that opportunity to come together offers opportunities to have discussions about other things. Because this format is great, but it's, it's harder when you're not in person and face-to-face. And maybe there's some opportunities yet before the weather gets too cold to do something like that. I don't know. To keep the conversation going.
And another thing that would be of importance to us is we now have seven directors, which, well, I'm very fortunate that Pam has joined our board. But we've felt over the years, we've had lawyers come and go, some people in the business community. And I've really been struggling over the years. It's like, like Ray said, I kind of dragged him onboard because I've known Ray and Kim Becker, I knew her, one of her people. He worked for Kim, so that's how I met Kim. When he left, he said, "Well, my boss might be interested." So we, I think that, that our, our board would, would be able to be more effective if we really had the more people who are representative of the business community. I know, like in the last, we did a very quick land acquisition. So I know realtors or a lawyer would be very helpful. In the past, we had George Wheeler, who was a lawyer, who was very helpful. So that we didn't have the expenses of going to a lawyer all the time. He had that insight, the ability to help review some things for us. So I think board development, one of the things that we really need to work on. We've got seven now. We couldn't go up to 11. So I don't want to add too many people too quickly, but certainly when we had, had just six people, we were just kind of on the edge of not meeting our minimum number as, as affected by our bylaws. So if, if you think of any path, actually, the, the things that seem to fit best are past directors or past trustees, because they now know the district and know what it takes to support conservation. So we have reached out to some past trustees. And I think everybody gets busier after they retire. But that's something to think about in board development and folks that might have applied to be trustees and weren't selected by the, by the board or something. If they still have that, that keen interest and get some experience. And hopefully, maybe we can have people on our board that end up as trustees. It would be nice to, to work together in board, board development.
If I may chime in on that as well, people don't have to commit to being a full-on board member either if their time and life situation doesn't allow. I believe, and Brad, you can back me up, that if somebody is willing to volunteer to offer their professional expertise to the foundation or to serve as an ad hoc committee member for fundraising or event planning or something along those lines, I believe that the board would definitely be down to have that conversation as well. I think that expanding our network is really critical at this point, especially when it comes to fundraising and increasing community awareness of the fact that the foundation exists as an entity to support the district. And especially in terms of increasing the number of people who are involved with the foundation, who have the capacity to make major gifts and also participate in planned giving, which are kind of two of our crucial fundraising points.
I think Shawna too, one of the things that really, by bringing Shawna onboard and with the staffing team and our volunteers is to develop an understanding that, that we do come together, that we have to give not only when we're presenting a pitch when we're out there talking about the conservation district and the work that we do, that we bring hand in hand the efforts that we do have a foundation and this is how our projects are funded. And, you know, unlike maybe some other conservation, and we do have a variety of conservation-focused agencies, organizations, each doing different parts, it gets confusing. And so our foundation, as you know, doesn't do programmatic stuff. You depend on the conservation district to do the programs, the research, and then you're our funding arm. And so we got to somehow make sure that that's known, that, that we're integrated. And I think a great stride's been made, but we continue to do more. So you'll see, you know, some of the initiatives Shawna has done in working with our communications team, obviously more information in our landscapes, social media, when we're doing those little videos that we're putting a trailer at the very end that talks about, you know, the foundation is there. And I think there's more of those types of things that, that we need to continue to do.
Could I add something here?
Certainly.
Well, one of the things that crossed my mind as, as people were speaking was we have the 50th anniversary coming up. And I'm sure Elizabeth has been thinking about that and there's some planning going on. And perhaps likewise, the foundation, even though it's not your 50th anniversary, somehow to bring the foundation into the planning and work on this 50th anniversary year. And then to tie that in with some fundraising, because, you know, it's a significant anniversary and there'll be a lot of warm, fuzzy feelings. But it would be nice to translate that perhaps into some revenue. So I think it gives an opportunity to highlight both what the district and the foundation have accomplished and to lay some of the practical groundwork for, for the future.
I definitely think that's a wonderful idea, Bill, and would like to say that the foundation and the district have been working together on some efforts to kind of tie the foundation into the 50th anniversary. For those of you who are newcomer, newcomers and may not know, the district is opening that passport to Lost Valley Visitor Center Permanent Museum Display Exhibit as part of their 50th celebration. And we're working to make sure that the foundation is integrally, integrally tied. I think I'm pronouncing that wrong, but for some reason, it's not coming out right. Is tied into that unveiling. There was going to be a large event, but because of the current state of affairs of the world, it's going to be a longer-term unveiling. But we're still working out a way that the foundation still gets credit for supporting that effort, as well as people are able to walk away with some information about who we are and what we do. And similarly, if you've been to Lost Valley Visitor Center, there is that donor wall that was put up as part of that passport to Lost Valley Visitor Center. And initially, it was thought that it was going to be an endowment campaign wall. But at the, right now, the foundation doesn't have a major donor base to complete a million-dollar endowment in a time span that would make sense. And so the board has made the decision to repurpose that wall into a general major donor wall. And hopefully, if a vaccine appears sometime next year, we will be able to use that as an opportunity to celebrate the 50th anniversary and celebrate those people who have contributed major gifts to the foundation, as well as bring in some new people who may be interested in contributing at that level. And then there are some other things that are in the works as well. But if anybody has any ideas around how to better integrate the foundation in the district, I am always all ears, as I think our board is.
Yeah, I thought one, one of the projects that we were given by the district was to support the 50th anniversary. Was it a book? I'm thinking, I can't remember what that project was. So that we do have a project that, that we were looking at as consideration, the support for that 50th anniversary.
So that, that is a neat project that we'll have an opportunity to tell our story. And obviously, a lot of photos and, and just the histories from our beginning and, and looking forward. But, but doubling back on to Bill's point, there's a variety of projects that are going to come over. So the foundation board hasn't had the details yet. But I guess I would entertain that we take a look at those. And clearly, those are what we feel are achievable. But if we're trying to do a little bit more with the 50th, and I don't know if that is what you're thinking, Bill, is a campaign or something specific of a, a raise, we should probably go back and take a look at some of the projects that were on the list or Shawna, go back and, as the board at the foundation looks at those and say, because there's a variety of things that are natural resource focused. There's the book. I'm trying to think, and I don't know what we had, the seed collection. There's, so there's a lot of great, great projects that have been advanced forward.
Bless you, Dave.
If we need to get, if we feel like, well, we've advanced over, isn't, you know, as the board's foundation directors, look at that. If we need something else, then we should have that conversation.
Can somebody's entered the waiting room? Okay.
I just let her in. It was Kim, I think she got picked up at some point.
Can I make a suggestion too? You know, with if, assuming, you know, even if there's a vaccination, we're not going to get back to, in quotes, "normal" for quite some time. I, you know, I mean, whatever "normal" is. Elizabeth and Shawna, I would seriously suggest that maybe the two of you do an interview with each other that we put on our individual websites to talk about the correlation between the conservation district and the conservation foundation. Or if you don't want it, you guys don't want to do it, then do it with our two presidents and talk about how we do that. I mean, in, you know, in the 50th anniversary, these are the kinds of things you want to highlight. And start with, obviously, the creation of a foundation and why that's so important to the conservation district. I mean, it, it can't be that difficult to do. And if we have to find somebody to actually shoot the video to be able to do that, then let's make that a priority, to find somebody who'll donate that. But everybody, everybody is spending more and more time on our Zoom calls and on, you know, YouTube and everything else. I think we should buy into that for a period of time, maybe.
Yeah, good idea.
I'd say we're capable of doing that.
And Pam makes a good point too, that there's still a confusion is the difference between the foundation and the district. And this might be a good opportunity to, to explain. And actually, a part of it was our, probably our own faults of these two, two different groups. Because when, for many years, the, the district was, was accepting donations and land donations and personal gifts. And it's only been since Shawna has come onboard that we've really made a, a significant effort to try to really separate that any time donations come into the district, they're really transferred over to the foundation so that we're recognized as the philanthropic branch of, of the district rather than the board or individuals at the district. So that was a, it's always been difficult to get the public to recognize the two different entities and what role we play, the very unique roles that each plays. And, and again, just putting a plug in for those who might be not knowing the, some of the history of, of the, of the foundation and some of the accomplishments. It was way back in 2010. So it's been 10 years since that passport to Lost Valley. It was actually a $400,000 state grant that allowed that passport. And the foundation made the critical match to allow that $400,000 project. So I think it's our, it's been our own fault that we don't really, we haven't gotten out to the public to, and, and people who support the district to really recognize what a significant role we have played in many of the projects, land acquisitions, and other things that have happened. So we really need to maybe take advantage of this 50-year of the district and kind of tag team and show what a role that we've played in the last 15 years, I guess, in, in supporting the district in many different aspects of, of the philanthropy.
Yeah, just on the, on the passport, and that's a great project. And really having the foundation as a partner, just for those that are new. And maybe what happened is the state of Illinois, we had received the grant and then the state of Illinois took the money. And then that project came to a halt. So it wasn't done to our doings of what slowed it down. It was the state of Illinois. And then the foundation came to allow us, because we had hired a contractor, to at least finish up, to get our exhibit drawings, at least so we weren't left with nothing, because we would have not been able to complete it. So the foundation allowed us to get the drawings and then we put it on pause. And then when the state reinvested back into that Capitol Museum grant, we were able to pick it back up and get it out on the street. And so the foundation was, it was so critical that, that you guys were there to help us make that project come to fruition. So thank you.
But again, and the owner should be on us, but I don't know how many people, even here on the, on the, you know, the district trustees would recognize that you got that $400,000 grant because the foundation was there to, to make that payment so that the, that project went forward. And we didn't lose, you guys had already invested some operational funds to, to get that going, but it might have been dropped if we didn't have the, the funding to, to keep that to completion so that those drawings and everything made it to completion.
So I'm going to ask a really naive question. We use the term passport to Lost Valley. What, what physically is that? Is that the display, the natural resources, natural heritage display there?
So the passport was kind of the design. There are interpretive centers in the exhibit. So it's your destination and there'll be a programmatic piece to it, but it's to start your journey. So really, it invites visitors into the visitor center and to learn about some of the natural features, the heritage. And then really, it's to get them out into the field. It's to get them outdoors and to really experience it.
But the part I, I remember most clearly, Dennis, and when that was being developed is they were, they were distinct parts of that display so that they could be, it was integrate, it was somehow, all these different components were overall integrated into the early history and the exploration of the Lost Valley area. But you could take out different components and bring in new ones so that the displays were always moving and more vibrant or fresh. Though I know that it has meant, so each display has many components that can be, that are interchangeable and, and can kind of tell a story, but it's always moving a little bit. So it's just but it's always moving a little bit, so it's just not a stagnant display.
Right. So there's one on prairies, there's one on wetlands, there's one on woodlands, but they've got different components that, you're right. They, they, they change out so that it stays fresh. An education team and natural resources can work together through that interpretation. We're looking forward to it.
I just wanted to add, to clarify what the foundation does that's different than all of the other different conservation groups in the county. You know, if you're speaking with one of the residents of the county, they might say, well, there's so many different groups doing the same thing. What, what makes the foundation different? Well, we're the only fundraising group that, that deals specifically with public lands. And so, you know, I think that's what makes us unique, and I think that should be explained to the public as something that benefits everyone. And some of the conservation groups strictly work on conservation easements that are on private property, you know. So, so there, the public's not avail, able to go to visit those. It's just a, a marketing hook, I think, that, that is helpful.
Good point, Ray.
What I also like about the video that Pam was mentioning, and some of the other things you're talking about, is bringing up these points that, of what the foundation provides, is when we've had issues over time, at least over my three years, if we've needed some, like, talking points, what, what is behind a particular issue? That's something that this is, that gets to a little bit. It's, it's giving us those points that where, what is the, what is the support from the foundation? What are the things that are most important, and helping us to understand that as a talking point for us when we're talking to other people? And the video itself kind of ties into that a little bit, in terms of answering questions that people might have. What's the relationship? And where, where, where's the connection? And how does that get pushed, pushed forward into projects and the funding? And so it's good to have all that information for us as trustees, as we go out and, and talk to people as well.
So tied to that, would you, as a board, benefit from a one-page fact sheet about the foundation? Because we have that information, and I could easily share it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
To come into the 50-year celebration, and then to look forward to the next 50 years, obviously, the foundation cut its teeth on these bond referendums. It's highly probable that we're not going to be purchasing another 25,000 acres. The issues that the district faces regarding our budget in part have to do with where are we going to get funding to develop the land that we have and up to its highest purpose over whatever length of time it takes? And the reality is that the, the tax situation may provide us an opportunity, as the bonds are paid off, to look to additional revenue sources, some of which might involve public finance. All of this is in the sort of discussion stages, as far as the board is, if I can speak, as far as the board is concerned, at least in my mind, it's, it, it hasn't crystallized out into a plan. But what I have learned in the last year is that there's not an excess of money anyplace in our budget. And so we're always looking at priorities, and, and then the political situation in the county, and then the pandemic, and then the general economy in McHenry County, and what can the property tax support? So there's, there may be an opportunity, if we can, if we can develop a plan to then educate the public as we get into this 50-year celebration of our past, as to what's going to be required to fund the next 50 years, and, and how our two organizations are thinking about that. I do think we have to be very sensitive to the issues of the property tax. But my, my hope is that, you know, there's a way through the, the maze of fiscal responsibility that will benefit the district. But these are sometimes hard things to talk about, and hard things to reduce to a 30-second sort of slogan. But I think it's something that we need to, to work on. And the 50th anniversary may, may be an opportunity then to do some, some education going forward as far as the, both the county board and the citizens of the county are concerned.
If I could just follow up, and I'm actually very pleased to hear that the district is having that conversation, because I think we've all known it's been important to kind of think about that transition, but the politics have kind of gotten in the way in some respects. The, the other wrinkle I see, and this actually could be a positive, you know, we talk about the pandemic and how that's challenged a lot of things, you know, financially and economically. But the response of the public to usership has been, I mean, really remarkable. And the district has been there since day one. They can get known that its preserves are going to be open, its trails are going to be open for, you know, sort of this, essentially, you know, people getting out of their houses and, and trying to maintain some semblance of reality. So with that, with the district's profile being very high, I think maybe promoting what the district has been able to provide to the residents of McHenry County, and, you know, kind of celebrating that, taking advantage of that. I won't say politically, but tying that into the recognition that, you know, here's this wonderful resource, it's really been used like it's never been used before. How are we going to make sure that it's sustainable in the future? And maybe we can sort of game plan together about how we can target donations to kind of balance that, how you're going to, you know, do your planning and balancing out, you know, paying off the bonds with other revenue sources, that kind of thing. But I think we're in a really unique time, with a really unique opportunity to follow up on, like I say, something we've known for a while. And it's both a challenge and an opportunity, I think.
That's, that's a really good point, Dennis, that the, the amount of usership had really grown when, when people are home, and, and the kids couldn't go to school, the, the number of people that were on the trail systems and, and hiking, and particularly when this all started, when the, the state parks were all closed, and really, the only open space was, was the county and, and availability to, to go on those trails and such. And you'd also try to bring in the, the health aspect of it, that, you know, getting outdoors and, and, and now is even more important when, when people are kind of, you know, overwhelmed by the whole concept of, of this pandemic, and what do you do? And you get outdoors and you enjoy nature and, and kind of a, a best way to re, release. So just the health benefits, and we talked about that as well, and trying to tie in with some of the hospitals and, and recognizing places where people can go. So so I, I don't want to keep everybody here too long, so I don't know if we should try to think about wrapping things up. I know a lot of times we go on and on with, with some of our, our foundation meetings, but I certainly don't want to drag you guys into, into having something too long. I, I value everybody's time. And so I, I think this has been a wonderful opportunity to, to meet with everybody and kind of put a face with a name, and, and certainly Kevin made a good point, that we try to spend more time and, and kind of listening in on some of your board discussions, so we understand where the board is headed. And it's been great having Linda, the liaison, to come and tell us what the board's been up to. And, and so I guess in the next meetings, our meetings are Zoom meeting as well. So feel free to, to join in and listen to how our discussions go as well. Our, our board will try to, will try to be more present at, at your meetings as well, so that, that we can be intimately aware of, of what's going on with the district at, at, at all times.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I think we've, we've really brought a lot of good ideas out here already. And, you know, without going too long and, and getting too many things started at once, but this is great if we can get together or re, if we can put a kind together and, and, and work out some kind of a framework. While we've already got a framework started, and Shawna and Elizabeth have done a great job of starting to put that together. And, and so we'll, we'll be able to do a lot, I think, going forward. But I, I've really enjoyed tonight. Has, anybody have anything else they really need to get tonight, or we need to talk amongst each of our boards and work, work towards some projects that we, we have in common, and there's a lot of them. So we, we really want to thank the foundation for everything they've funded and, and for all we're going to do together. It's been great. Thank you.
And, and we, we've stretched out our meeting long enough, just so we can see that Pam is, is amongst. So we're glad you made it home safely, Pam.
I'm going to tell you how I was driving, trying to press my, my, you know, mute button and not my mute button, and don't. It was not pleasant.
Hey, Brad. One other thing too, also appreciative to the district and to the district board for the survey that was completed in 20, in April 2020. And, because that was one of the meetings that I did listen to when that, the results were presented. And anyway, I would recommend it for all of my foundation cohorts here. It's a 71-page doc, so it's, 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 it's comprehensive, but it's pretty interesting. And again, helps us to speak, I think, a common language, not only here between boards, but also to our user and citizen base here. So, so some good stuff there. And again, kudos to that. And, and it's also exciting just to see it on that new website that I think we kind of partnered on between organizations.
That survey was pre-pandemic, so I'd love to see the data now.
Yeah.
Actually, yeah.
It was already high. How could you get higher? But I, I bet it would.
Well, I appreciate everyone's time. Unless somebody else would like to make a comment, I guess I would entertain a, a motion to bring our, our joint meeting to an end. And Elizabeth in particular, or Shawna, I guess you know the, the rules on joint meetings and who actually brings this to an end. But I would entertain a, a motion to, to bring this joint meeting to an end if, if, if appropriate.
You do. We'll take that motion, I guess, and.
I'll move for the Conservation District that we adjourn.
And then from Dave, can I have a second from somebody on the court? Okay, from Linda?
Yes.
So I have a motion made and seconded. Elizabeth, I think we need a roll call, though, I believe.
Sure do. Okay, so let's do that. We'll start with Trustee Dom.
Oh, he's muted.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot there, going. Trustee Campbell.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Fritz.
That was an affirmative.
Yeah. Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Hennig.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess we need to do that. Do we have a, a motion from our board to adjourn?
Adjourn.
I'll second it.
And a second? Okay, I guess I'll do a roll call. Director Ivors?
Yes.
Director Gorman?
Yes.
Director Dreher?
Yes.
Director Eisbrenner?
Yes.
Director Becker?
Yes.
Director Althoff?
No.
A dissenting vote? I've never heard. You're going to be trouble, aren't you, Pam?
I just waited for someone. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you all very much.
Good night, everybody.
Right now.
Good night.
Shawna, I'll see you on Saturday.
Sounds good.